I would ask that we please silence or turn off your cellphones, please.
Calling to order the Wheat Ridge City Council meeting of June 13th, 2011. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For the city clerk, please take role.
Yes, Davis Reinhardt.
Present.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Joey Demott.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
And Karen Berry. And for the record, Tracy Langworthy is absent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2011?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval, second by Councilmember Adams and Jay. I think we need one abstention. Please poll the council.
Oops, I'm sorry. What is the wrong one?
Oh, please re- reset.
First time I've ever done this.
Oh, sure.
Please revote.
And the motion carries six to zero with one abstention by Councilmember Reinhardt.
Thank you. We have one quick presentation, the COFAX Marathon Relay Team.
Are you supposed to come up?
So a little over a month ago, the City of Wheat Ridge sponsored a COFAX Marathon team for the municipal league. We had 31 teams that were municipal, city teams, and we took seventh. So congratulations to our team, took seventh out of 31 teams. I wanted just to really quickly acknowledge our participants. We had great participation from city staff, elected officials, residents. It was great. So I wanted to give out these medals. And our first person who's not here tonight was Betsy Saylor. She's with our police department, so congratulations to Betsy. Second was Davis Reinhardt. Please step forward.
Come on.
Davis ran uphill all the way. There was never a downhill.
Yeah, I'm gonna go put it on and make it all official.
Next, our city manager was Patrick Goff. Patrick ran downhill the whole way.
It was 32 degrees.
What's that?
It was 32 degrees.
32 degrees, is that? We had Jerry Doll, our city attorney. Were you there?
Andrew.
Congratulations. And last but not least, from Wheat Ridge High School, Astaire DeTulio. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll try it again next year. So the next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Please step forward if you have a public comment on any item not on the agenda. Please step forward to the podium. And this is on any item not on the agenda for tonight. Please spell your last name for the record and spell your last name for the record and give us your city or your address.
Okay. Chad Harr, H-A-R-R, 7190 West 48th Avenue. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission, and we are presenting the first-ever Wheat Ridge Garden Tour along with Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation, Live Well Wheat Ridge, and Wheat Ridge 2020. So it's the Discover Wheat Ridge Garden Tour, and I have a little blurb to read, so bear with me. It's discover the beauty of Wheat Ridge neighborhoods in our first-ever garden tour. Garden sizes range from small-scale urban gardens to large country gardens with a wide variety of styles. Featured gardens offer color-packed perennials, succulents, exotic plants, something to delight everyone's eye. They also include coyponts and spectacular- spectacular- not spectacular- spectacular yard art, ranging from small pieces of large- from small pieces to large park-like sculptures, a day of pure enjoyment. The tour will be held Sunday, June 26th, and starts at the Richard Harts Estate, where tickets are- tickets are in the form of a brochure map to go around. I'm better at just winging it, so here's what we're gonna do. And you can purchase the tickets the day of the event. We're gonna do it rain or shine, so part of the- one of the gardens on the tour is the Richard Harts Estate, which the Wheat Ridge Parks Department keeps beautiful. Actually got married there. I think it's a great place, so that was a long time ago. And tickets are $10 each. There are no advance tickets, so we'd love everybody in the city to come out and enjoy the gardens. We have 12 gardens on the tour right now, along with the community garden, the Happiness Community Garden as well. So please come out and enjoy the tour that day on the 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Please spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R. I'm the Executive Director of Wheat Ridge 2020 and also a resident of District One. I had a couple of general updates for you all. One, I wanted to thank everyone in the community that has been supporting our local businesses and the Live Local series of events on second Thursdays of every month. This last event on Thursday at the Dragonfly had 64 people, so we packed out that little place and had a great time, and we hope that you'll all join us for the next one, which is on July 14th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Dairy Queen. They have some buy-one-get-one specials, and who doesn't love ice cream and orange Julius in July? So we hope to see you there. Chad already mentioned that we are cosponsoring the garden tour. We hope people will come out for that on Sunday, June 26th. And then right after that, we have one more event. We're just an event-filled summer here in Wheat Ridge. On Tuesday, June 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will host a candidate education night for those who are interested in running for office here in the city of Wheat Ridge. As for any of the races that are open, anybody who's ever thought about being a candidate, we hope you'll come that night. We will have our city clerk there, Michael Snow. He'll be talking a little bit about the basics of becoming a candidate. Jefferson County Association of Realtors will be talking about the real estate market. Wheat Ridge 2020 will be talking about real estate and revitalization in Wheat Ridge. And then the White House Project will be presenting on how to be a successful candidate and some campaigning tips. So if that sounds interesting to you, it's going to be at J. Carr, which is 950 Wadsworth Boulevard, and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 on Tuesday, June 28th. And I really wanted to ask you, as current elected officials, to invite anyone that you know who may be thinking about running. We think this will be a good forum, and we hope to have a great turnout. So thanks for all of your help.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment on any item not on the agenda? The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and by unanimous consent, does anybody have a problem adding an extension of the city manager contract for one month? So that will be added to the agenda as item number 10, extension of the city manager contract for one month. So moving on to consent agenda, Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda, Resolution 142011, amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $3,635 for the renewal of the Wheat Ridge TV8 Community Bulletin Board Software for 2011. B, Resolution 172011, approving an intergovernmental agreement between Jefferson County and the City of Wheat Ridge for inclusion of the city as part of the urban county for the county's entitlement to receive community development block grant funds. Item C, Resolution 182011, approving a contract with the City of Edgewater for the maintenance of streets that are common to both cities. Motion?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, was seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on the consent. Please poll the council.
And the motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Council Bill 20-2011, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Councilmember Jay?
The city has previously adopted the 2006 additions of the international building, residential, and fire codes. To complement the zoning changes supporting urban agriculture that were previously approved by city council, this ordinance would amend the appropriate sections of the adopted building, residential, and fire codes to allow for the regulation of hoop houses.
Motion number? Now, we need to assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 20-2011 will be assigned, ordinance number 1494.
Thank you. Do we have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary? Questions?
If you have them.
Okay. Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on item number two tonight? Do we have any council questions or discussion from staff on item number two? Want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2011, an ordinance amending Chapter Five of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the regulation of hoop houses and that it takes effect 15 days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number two, was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item three is Council Bill 15-2011. We are still in the public hearing to be continued. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would move to continue the public hearing to the June 27th meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to continue, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Amendments are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed on first reading. Let's see, we have item four, Council Bill 21-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 212011, an ordinance reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall, increasing his salary compensation and approving a presiding municipal judge services contract. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 212011, an ordinance reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall, increasing his salary compensation and approving a presiding municipal judge services agreement on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, June 27th, 2011, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers and that it take effect upon adoption at second reading as permitted by the Charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval on first reading, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Resolution is 15-2011. Councilmember Jay?
Resolution Number 15-2011, a resolution adopting a debt policy and unrestricted fund balance policy. A top priority in the 2010-2011 Wheat Ridge Strategic Plan is the development of a large-term, excuse me, long-term financial sustainability plan, which is an action item under the goal of financially sound city providing quality services.
Motion's in order.
I further move, I further-
Oh, yeah, well, you read the executive summary?
Right.
So now a motion's in order.
Okay. Well, I need to add.
Well, you have to make your main motion, or however you want to do, a main motion or a main motion with an amendment.
Okay.
It should be under suggested motion.
Okay, recommended motions with amendment. I move to approve Resolution Number 15-2011, a resolution adopting a debt policy and unrestricted fund balance policy with the addition that spending below the targeted 25% unrestricted fund balance will require a majority vote of city council unless such use reduces the balance below the 17% level, and that would require a supermajority vote of council.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval with amendment, and was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion. Did you want to just clarify that for the record? I thought you said "supermajority" twice. Maybe you didn't.
No.
Okay. Okay, please poll the council.
Motion carries six to one, with Councilmember Demott voting no.
Thank you. Item six is Resolution 16-2011. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. Resolution Number 16-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $40,000 for the Wheat Ridge Business District Revitalization Incentive Grant Program.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 16-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $40,000 for the Wheat Ridge Business District Revitalization Incentive Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites. We have some folks here to speak, and then we'll move on to amendments. So please step forward if you'd like to speak on item number seven, number six, item six. Please spell your last name for the record and your city or your address.
Janice Hoppe, H-O-P-P-E, 718 West 38th Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak- sorry, I'm crazy about microphones. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the additional funding for the Wheat Ridge Business District. I own Compass Construction. I also sit on the Board of Directors for the Wheat Ridge Business District at the pleasure of the city council. The Wheat Ridge Business District does matching grant assistance funds for businesses in Wheat Ridge. It's not just for 38th Avenue, it's for all of Wheat Ridge, which was changed in 2005. This year, sorry, I have notes. We have had regular grants paid, 12 of them, for a total amount grounded at $72,244, for an estimated total project cost on those 12 grants of $632,662. We had one large grant project with the community development block grant funds of $60,000, which also included total project costs on a large grant of $90,000. So far, we have six grants pending and uncommitted funds remaining in 2011 is $4,126. I first became aware of the program when we were looking to purchase a building for our business, and we were looking in several different communities, and there were a couple of things in Wheat Ridge that really kind of outweighed all of the other communities. The Wheat Ridge Business District grant funding was one of them. I would really appreciate if you guys would consider helping the businesses to take more pride into their exterior and put some more dollars on their exterior and be able to make it look great. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm John Marriott, it's M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T, and I have a business at 4715 Kipling Street, and I reside in Old Town, Nevada. I'm also the chairperson of the Wheat Ridge Business District, and I wanted to talk tonight a little bit about it. The thing I wanted to remind everybody is the Wheat Ridge Business District is your economic development program. It's a program that belongs to the city and the council. It's administered by a very talented, dedicated 11-member board. 25% of the city council sits on that board, so there's very closeness there. In addition to that, the city council has the right and the ability, and does, appoint more than 25% of the Board of Directors of the Wheat Ridge Business District in addition. So there's obviously a pretty tight tie there. I would encourage you to okay some additional funding for the Wheat Ridge Business District. I think we're doing really good work and have modified our program over the years through Board of Director Action at every turn when any kind of issues came up. I think the program has been made stronger, more robust. I think we're having a big effect. I think 38th Avenue shows that very dramatically. And rather than trying to manage the program from city council, think about it as the way that it was set up originally, which was a very close relationship with council as the evidence of the directors coming from city council and the city council appointing directors, and to, at any turn where you feel necessary, to work through the Business District Board of Directors to address any concerns you have, any suggestions you have, and anything we can do to make the program better. But I think the program's working very good as it is, and I think there's plenty to be proud of there, and I would encourage you to give us some additional funding to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes, this is part of what I regard as routine oversight of giving away taxpayers' dollars. I'd like to make an amendment which largely codifies the current program in a fashion that gives us a little bit more accountability and some limits on the ability to change the program without coming back to council for clarity. And so in that light, I'd like to move to amend the resolution to include the following conditions. Prior to the release of funds, the Wheat Ridge Business District will provide the city manager with a full accounting of prior expenditures, including a log of funds received, amount, names, and addresses of prior grants and grantees, administrative fees, and current balance, a written statement from the Business District agreeing to the following conditions, maximum grant award of $3,000 with a cap for $3,000 cap for a sign, $6,000 cap for facade, and $2,000 cap for architectural design. The applicant will always spend the funds equal to or greater than the Business District grant, and no more than two grants may be made to any one landowner or their immediate family. I see this as sort of routine accountability, and I'm hoping the council will support me in that amendment.
Okay, we need a second. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Jay, and that was an amendment that was passed out to council. Discussion on the amendment? Ms. Sang?
I will not be supporting this amendment. I think that we should have a meeting with the Business District Board and let them know of anyone's concerns about how they are spending the money, and I think it has worked very well. It's worked for a long, long time this way, and we don't require any other organization that we give money to to have the same accountability that they want. We give them the money, and they have a Board of Directors that say how that money is going to be spent, so I'll not be supporting this at this time.
Mr. Demott?
I also am gonna have a problem supporting some of these amendments. I am a member of the Business District. I have been for nearly two years, along with Councilmember Joyce J., Mayor DeTulio, and eight other board members that are- some, you know, many of them came when, became board members after they received a grant and have shown years and years of support after that grant. It's, you know, when you- many of them are citizens of Wheat Ridge, almost all of them. They're either citizens, business owners, property owners, elected officials. 11-member board, that's a pretty large board. I think what we need to realize is they've- we've followed these criteria very strictly within our own criteria. I think that, you know, as far as the criteria of spending equal or greater, that's one of the criteria already. That's a matching grant. If you spend six, you get three. If you spend five, you get 2,500. It's- we've not gone over that. That's our own rule, and people have exceeded that. As Mrs. Hoppe said, the amount that they've- we've given out as opposed to what has been spent on these projects is 10%. So they're not just spending equal or greater, they're spending 90% more than the amount they're receiving. Some of these aren't, you know, you're talking, you know, $100,000, several hundred thousand-dollar projects that really, you know, $11,000 is just a kickstart for them, and something that really has snowballed to a lot greater pride in some of these businesses. I know, you know, I can name one right next to the restaurant that they got a $1,300 matching grant, is all they got. They didn't get a very big one, but they were appreciative, and they rolled that into doing some landscaping, which I have heard from the neighbors, several of the neighbors that have come over and said, you know, "We should have given them more." Well, they didn't ask for more. They asked for that, they got it, and it's really snowballed. You know, the money that we're asking for is to go out and be proactive to the community. That way, we can recruit some businesses and start mentioning our program to other businesses, and we don't have to wait for people to come to us. I think that, you know, there's a limit to what we can do with the money that we receive when we, you know, we've received $40,000 so far this year, and we've helped, you know, in the last year, we've helped 12 businesses, last calendar year, so. But as far as the amendment goes, I think that the- these people on the board, elected officials, citizens, business owners, property owners, this money is as much their money as it is our money, and they are keeping an eye on it. And I feel like I would be insulting the members if I agreed with this amendment, and I just can't support it.
Any discussion or comments on the amendment? Ms. Jay?
As mentioned, I am on the Board of Directors for the Business District, and I could say nothing but revelations of good work done, et cetera. As far as the amendment is concerned, it's always a difficult balance to say we need accountability for the citizens and we need to be providing service for our economic development program, which is what this is. This is not giving money to the Business District, this is giving money to the businesses. However, I feel very compelled to support my citizens, that my citizens need to know all accountability of all of, as we do within our own city here. Whatever we spend money on, we know to the die what we have spent on it. And so I will support the amendment only because of that, but I truly do appreciate the work of the Business District.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Stites?
The Business District has been very, very successful. It was initially set up for businesses on 38th Avenue, and then it has involved the city. We're at a crossroads in this city. We're finally, finally starting to get some people coming in and looking at some of our buildings, some of our businesses, whether it be on 38th. We've had great success so far on 38th. We would hope that would continue. I would hope, you know, we don't like it when we get federal money and there's shoestrings attached to it. In some cases, we've had to turn it down because there's so many attachments to it that it's not worth getting. I think it's wrong for us to micromanage, and that's exactly what we're doing. The Business District has been in business now for several years. They have their own cap on signs they have for structures and, you know, particular things, and I think all these groups, once a year, have come in to us with our financials. I have been very proud of the Business District and the work that they've done, and I would hope that they will continue that. So I can't support this, you know. It's already what they're doing. I don't think it's for us to tell them. You know, they have to operate the best way that they feel for the city, the businesses, and for themselves. And as far as accountability goes- And as far as accountability goes, my lord, there's what, three or four of you sitting on there from council? If that doesn't lend credibility to it, I don't know what does. And if it doesn't, then you better get off. But it really bothers me. We can't micromanage this stuff, and I will support the Wheat Ridge Business District to the best amount of ability, but I will not support it with this amendment.
Ms. Adams?
Yes, I will be supporting this amendment. I think to codify the bylaws and the rules and regulations, I also believe in the successes of the business district, and I think this is adding accountability. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I just wanted to clarify one thing, Mr. Reinhardt, that it just was approved by the board, the business district board, last meeting, that if a business gets a grant from the city, from the business district, and they use a Wheat Ridge local business, then the grantee could get up to 10% more of that, of the funding. So the only problem we're going to run into with your amendment would be is that if they got the max grant, they would have to be allowed to potentially get the max grant plus 10% more, which would be up to $1,000 more. So I don't know if you can amend that so that at max grant, the 10% would not be a problem. So the idea was, we wanted to promote local business, and there'll be an application will say, "Did you use a Wheat Ridge local business?" And of course, Britta Fish will be watching all that. But if they do use a local business for a sign or facade, there was an additional 10% on there. So that would just... And the only place it's going to be a problem is going to be when they max out at $11,000.
You know, I'm not adverse to a friendly amendment, to my amendment, to accomplish that. You know, frankly, that looked more like micromanaging to me than the rest of it, which is simply saying, trying to set a boundary, which I didn't perceive to be insulting or either micromanaging or I didn't perceive it to be insulting to anyone to suggest that we get what I regard as routine accounting. But that aside, I'm not adverse to a friendly amendment, to my amendment, if we can structure it to allow the current grants to be extended beyond the... I guess, let me try it. Would you, if I get this wrong, would you help me? Can I amend my own amendment anyway as a procedure? Again, I would like them to amend my own amendment to allow a 10% increase above the stated caps in the event that the contractor for this business is Wheat Ridge Business in accordance with current business district practice.
Is that okay with the second?
Does that work for the clerk?
Then we have an amendment to an amendment?
You can do one time an amendment to an amendment. So, yes, we'll vote on Mr. Reinhardt's amendment if there's a second for his amendment.
He didn't write it.
As amended?
So is there a second for Mr. Reinhardt's amendment?
Second.
Now, we're voting on the amendment to the amendment. This is getting a little deep. We haven't done this often, but you can do it. So we have an amendment to the amendment, and it was seconded by Councilmember Jay. Please poll the council on the amendment. To the amendment.
Amendment fails, four to three, with councilmembers Berry, Jay, and Reinhardt voting yes.
That really doesn't help the situation any. So we have the main amendment as...
The main amendment, to call the question, I suppose.
So we're voting on the main amendment from Mr. Reinhardt.
We're voting on, as written?
As written, as written.
What about the 10%?
That failed.
Well, it failed. The 10% failed.
Is there another way of handling that?
Yeah.
So right now, we're voting on the main amendment.
The first of them.
The first amendment. That was read by Mr. Reinhardt.
Okay.
Which is the one?
So please vote on that amendment.
Place your votes, yes. Some of you may have placed before we actually called it. Place your votes now. There we go. And the amendment carries, four to three, with councilmembers Demott, Stites, and Sang voting no.
So we have a main motion that was read by Mr. Demott with a, the amendment that Mr. Reinhardt read. Now, Mr. Stites?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like that. Add an amendment? I think the need is great. I think the need is now, and I think we could possibly miss out on some good projects. They could miss out on some good projects. So I would like to bump the money up from $40,000 to $75,000.
Is there a second? You have a motion to amend for $75,000, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the amendment?
I just have a question as to, I suppose, the urgency. Do we think that we'll go through that money faster than we would get an opportunity to come back at $10,000? For roughly $10,000, we'd need to go through five or six grants to have it, before they'd have an opportunity to come back to us to see if we still supported the program. Do we know if there's anything like that kind of a backlog, Mr. Mayor? Would you speak to the number of grants and backlog and the likelihood of having multiple grants to that tune?
Thanks. Yeah, as far as a backlog of grants, we do not have a backlog of grants. At our last board of directors meeting last week, we did approve two grants, maybe three, which effectively brought our fund balance to near zero. It put our total granting of monies for the year through five months of the year at a little more than $40,000. And from month to month, we don't know. So we don't know if next month, what types of applications we'll get. However, there has been interest expressed by several different potential applicants, and we foresee the pace of business to be at least the same as it has been this spring. It appears to us that economic activity is improving, and this time of year is kind of the time of year when construction happens, and so we're more likely to see that type of stuff going forward. But as far as having a backlog of grants waiting to be funded that we don't have funding for, we don't have that. We have been able to stay caught up to this point. And so, you know, forecast, we would guess that if we went through $40,000 in the first five months, we would expect to go through $40,000 in the next five or last months.
Thank you.
Would be my forecast.
Can we have an amendment for $75,000, was seconded? Please poll the council on the amendment.
And the motion carries, four to three, with councilmembers Demott, Stites, and Sang voting no.
Want to reset that?
Did I not reset? My bad. How can I keep track of you guys, anyway? Please vote again.
Please reset and vote again on the amendment for $75,000.
It looked the same, but that didn't surprise me. So I, you know, we need your vote, we need your votes.
Please vote again.
There we go. And the motion fails, four to three, with councilmembers Demott, Stites, and Sang voting yes.
Ms. Jay, do you want to make an amendment?
I'm, would this be an amendment now? I add, I have an additional amendment that we grant, that the Wheat Ridge Business District will be allowed to add 10% to their grants if the, if a business is selected from Wheat Ridge for the sign or any of the grant programs where this would apply.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion to allow up to 10% more on the caps if a local business is selected by the applicant? Discussion?
Point of order. How is that amendment different than the one we just, that failed?
Were you on the prevailing side?
She was. Who was the prevailing side?
We were on the prevailing side when it failed. Oh, okay. So we need someone from the prevailing side to make that amendment.
You have to do a motion to reconsider.
So is anybody willing to reconsider on the prevailing side?
So moved.
We weren't on the prevailing side either, I don't think.
Well, we were on separate sides.
Did you vote for it? No, we need someone to vote for it.
I was on the losing side.
It failed, so...
Someone on the losing side has to ask for reconsideration. That was Councilmember Berry, Adams, Mr. Stites. You were on the losing side of that amendment, too. Anybody who was on the losing side can ask for reconsideration for that 10%.
So moved.
Isn't it the prevailing side has to ask for reconsideration?
I mean, the prevailing side voted no, that was on the... The prevailing side was the no vote.
That's right.
The prevailing side was the no vote.
Right. And reconsider, isn't a reconsideration is a simple majority?
Yes. But who was on, I need to know who was on the prevailing side? Who voted no on the amendment?
I'll need Councilmember Jay to restate that. I want to remind everybody that a lot of motions might be easy for you because all you have to do is say them and think through it. I have to record those, and you do have a council rule to provide those to me in writing. So it's a little harder when you guys are throwing a lot of them out and then ask me to revert back and exactly tell you what you voted on before and whether or not it's different from what you have now.
Her motion actually doesn't even exist right now because she wasn't on the prevailing side. So right now, we have the main motion that was amended with Mr. Reinhardt's written amendment. So somebody who was on the prevailing side, who actually voted no on the 10%, would have to reconsider.
I did.
So you voted no on the 10%?
No, I didn't vote on the 10%. That, I voted no, well, no, I voted yes on the amendment, so you're right.
Right.
Which does not be exactly...
Right. So we need Mr. Stites or Mr. Demott or... So anybody who voted no has to make the motion reconsider.
It was, I'm not sure who the...
Are we going back to the vote on Mr. Reinhardt's original amendment?
Right.
Amendment to my own amendment.
Amendment to the amendment. Whoever voted no on that.
Which carried four to three?
No, failed.
It failed.
The amendment to the amendment failed, three to four.
No, I'm not talking about the amendment to the amendment. I'm talking about Mr. Reinhardt's first amendment.
Right. And that one passed. That's fine.
Right. That carried.
And then he made an amendment to the amendment, and that failed. That's what we're trying to reconsider possibly.
Maybe we can have the...
Excuse me, I'd like to call the question, I'd like to call the question on the main motion at this point.
Okay, it takes six votes to call for the question. Please poll the council on the six votes to call for the question.
Call the question fails with councilmembers Demott, Stites, and Sang voting yes. Did I not clear those again?
I don't think I've cleared it.
Oh, I'm usually so good at this, too.
Are we ready?
Yes, ready. And the call to question, am I right, it fails at four to three, with councilmembers Demott, Stites, and Sang voting no.
Mr. Snow, all we need to know is who voted no on the amendment to the amendment? Who voted no on the amendment to the amendment?
I'm going to take a moment and catch up. So I actually have a record of that? I'd love to be able to just reiterate it for you, but I can't even...
That's all we need to know because they're the ones that could reconsider.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, it's your call, but you could maybe take a recess while the clerk's figuring out that?
We're okay.
Okay.
So let me just reiterate where we are. First of all, okay, I'm going to have to clear out my records here, but are we talking about Stites' amendment?
Amendment to the amendment by Mr. Reinhardt.
Okay. All right, let me go back to this.
It was a 10% amendment.
Jay, failed with councilmembers Berry, Jay, and, and I didn't finish writing it down, I have a bookmark to listen to that later. So who else voted for, who else voted for Mr. Reinhardt's amendment to his amendment?
I voted against.
Mr. Stites voted against, so he can actually reconsider because he was on the prevailing side. So, Mr. Stites, if you want to make a motion to reconsider, you can.
Okay. Wait, 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 just a second. My question was, Mr. Reinhardt's amendment to his amendment failed, right? And the votes in favor of it are, rather, yeah, what I have in favor of it are Berry, Jay, and, and who else was that?
David.
Debbie Davis? Okay.
They actually were on the prevailing side, the noes were.
That's not right.
So...
I voted for that amendment. It was...
If you voted against, you were on the prevailing side.
Yeah.
That's correct. If you voted for it, you can't do it again.
Right. So we need somebody who voted against it to ask for reconsideration.
Right.
Joyce did vote no on that.
That means Joyce, yeah. Wait.
I voted no, and that side won, yes.
Yeah. So you can reconsider. Uh, no, I have, I have that Berry, Jay, and Reinhardt voted no, which is not the prevailing side. I'm sorry, not, I'm sorry, they voted yes, and that is not the prevailing side.
Voted yes, that was not the prevailing side. So anybody who voted no can reconsider. So Mike, do you want to reconsider?
Sure.
All right. Karen, if they vote, if they voted no, they're on the prevailing side.
That'd be correct. That'd be correct.
If somebody voted no, it failed, they're on the prevailing side. So Mr. Stites has made a motion to reconsider. Is there a second for reconsideration of the 10%?
Second.
If a motion to reconsider is seconded by Councilmember Demott, please poll the council on the reconsideration. Please clear the board first.
I'm not so positive that's correct. Mr. Dahl, can you help us, please?
That's correct.
Well, no, the, if the motion failed, then those who voted against the motion are on the prevailing side, and one of them may move to reconsider. And the people who voted in the majority, it doesn't mean that the motion passes or fails, whichever side won.
The actual motion, please, as Jay originally said.
Yep.
We have to vote on the reconsideration first, and she can restate her motion.
Who would have voted? I'd like the motion to be...
All right. Folks, we're not, it's not that, first, we have to vote on the reconsideration. So Mr. Stites has made a motion to reconsider. It was seconded by Councilmember Demott. Please go ahead and vote on the reconsideration first. Clear the board first before we vote. On 10%. So we're voting on the reconsideration of 10%.
And who seconded that?
Uh, Mr. Demott.
Okay, motion to reconsider carries, four to three, with councilmembers Berry, Adams, and Sang voting no.
Okay. Now, Mr. Stites, do you want to make a motion?
This is why sometimes it's best not to mess with some of this stuff. I move to reconsider amendment to allow an additional 10% to be granted to any applicant using Wheat Ridge contractors or businesses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. So now we're allowing an extra 10% on the caps if they use a local business. That was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt, Ms. Berry.
It shouldn't, it's not a reconsider, so that reconsider shouldn't have been part of the motion, just...
You can go ahead and read it, I think we consider out.
Give me that thing.
Here's the main motion again, or the amendment.
I move to amend to allow an additional 10% to be granted to any applicant using Wheat Ridge contractors or businesses.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was seconded by Reinhardt and Sang. Discussion on the amendment? Please poll the council.
Motion carries, five to two, with councilmembers Berry and Adams voting no.
Okay, so right now, we have the main motion as amended by Councilmember Reinhardt with his written amendment and the 10% by Mr. Stites. Any other amendments before we poll the council on the main motion as amended? Ms. Sang?
I will be voting against. I'll be voting against this tonight, not that I am not in favor of the funds, but I am not in favor of the limit, what I feel are the limitations of the board. I still think that we should meet with them before we put this in motion, and I think that's a courtesy that we should give to them, so I'll not be supporting it, even though I do support the funds.
Any other comments? Mr. Stites?
I'm going to try it one more time because I think that we need to take this strongly on what we're doing here, but I would amend the amount from $40,000 to $55,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion to amend for $55,000? Discussion? Please poll the council.
Is that the same vote? I don't know if I cleared it now. Motion carries, five to two, with councilmembers Berry and Adams voting no. Oh, I'm sorry, you guys. Trying to make this as miserable as possible for you, actually. Yeah, great, okay. Who seconded that, by the way, so I can get record of that?
Mr. Demott, seconded for $55,000.
Okay, please place your vote. The motion carries, four to three, with councilmembers Berry, Adams, and Jay voting no.
Okay, so what we have here is the main motion that was read out of the packet. It was amended by Mr. Reinhardt as written in your packet there that he passed out tonight with a 10% additional on the caps for using local businesses, and it was amended to be $55,000 rather than $40,000. Discussion on the main motion as amended? Please poll the council.
Motion carries, six to one, with councilmember Sang voting no.
Thank you. Item seven is Resolution 19-2011. I need a volunteer for item seven because Councilmember Langworthy was going to read that.
Actually, I had asked to read, read it, and it sent you an email.
You did?
Yes, and Councilmember Langworthy confirmed that with you.
I didn't, I didn't get it.
Well, she sent it to you. Okay.
Okay.
Resolution 19-2001, a resolution approving the Jefferson County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Natural hazards in Jefferson County and the city of Wheat Ridge have hysterically caused significant damages resulting in loss of life, damage to property, and natural resources damages. Undertaking hazard mitigation actions will reduce the potential for harm to people and property from future hazard occurrences. The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires an adopted natural hazard mitigation plan as a condition of future fund date for mitigation projects under the Federal Emergency Management Agency pre- and post-disaster mitigation grant programs. The Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan has been prepared in accordance with FEMA requirements. The city of Wheat Ridge has fully participated in the FEMA prescribed mitigation planning process to help prepare Jefferson, prepare the Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Multi-Jurisdictional Mitigation Plan. The city of Wheat Ridge will submit this adopted resolution to the Colorado Office of Emergency Management and FEMA officials to enable the plan's final approval. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 19-2001, a resolution adopting the Jefferson County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan as an official plan upon approval by the Colorado Office of Emergency Management and FEMA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Demott. Discussion on the main motion? Please pull the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight is a motion to award RFB 11-2001 a street sweeper. I need a volunteer for that one, too. Who'd like to do number eight?
I'll do it.
Mr. Demott?
Item number eight, a motion to award IFB 1121 for the purchase of a street sweeper to O.J. Watson of Denver, Colorado, at a total cost of $157,300.
Motion in order? Motion's in order.
I move to award RFB 1121 street sweeper to O.J. Watson of Denver, Colorado, for a total cost of $157,300.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Jay. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number eight? Seeing non-council discussion or questions? Please pull the council.
Motion carries five to two with council members Sang and Stites voting no.
Thank you. Item nine is a motion for District One appointment. Mr. Reinhardt?
There's currently a vacancy in the Parks and Recreation Commission for District One. Amanda Dear is a resident of District One and has submitted an application to Parks and Recreation Commission and is requesting an appointment. Councilmember Karen Barry has requested Amanda Dear be appointed to fill the vacancy ended in 3/13. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to appoint Amanda Dear to the Parks and Recreation Commission representing District One, term to expire March 2nd, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Barry. Please pull the council.
Did I do it again?
It's not resetting, Mr. Snow. Something is going on over there.
Something's not resetting here. Okay, let's try that again. Please place your votes.
I don't know what's wrong with it.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Not helping the situation.
Hmm.
Item 10 is the extension of the city manager contract for one month. Mr. Dahl, do you want to read a motion? So move it.
Yes, thanks, council. In order to give us time to collect all the evaluations and conduct the evaluation before we act on the, council acts on the contract, I would ask that council would take a motion to extend the city manager employment agreement with Patrick Off to and including July 19th, 2011.
Someone could say so moved.
So moved.
Say that.
So moved by Councilmember Sang and seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Please pull the council on the extension.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
Nothing further, thank you.
City clerks' matters?
Uh, yes. Let me just, um, let's see, I wanted to just inform some, everybody in the city. You heard from Breda Fisher earlier this evening. She spoke about a joint effort by the Jefferson County Association of Realtors, the White House Project, and Wheat Ridge 2020 to put on a candidate's education night. This actually is closely scheduled with the clerks' potential candidates forum and is, has sort of a similar need, really, just to inform any citizens, anybody in the community who might be even interested or thinking about running for office, or somebody who might potentially be serving on a candidate committee to help somebody else run, anybody who just needs to know how to get it done or what it entails. So, with that said, I will be attending the joint event on the 28th of June, and rather than holding what I'd had planned for July 7th, we will reschedule that event whereby there'll be another event where we can get deeper into the details of such things as campaign, finance laws, the things that are a little bit more relevant, I guess, to the clerk's office with respect to campaigns. We'll reschedule that, and I'll announce that as soon as I can. Unfortunately, we kind of made this decision just tonight to postpone that, so I don't have a date for the clerk's office forum just yet. But I'll be in attendance there on the 28th. I welcome anybody interested to please come. There'll be a lot of very wealthy, helpful information. Wealthy information could be. For some, it does become wealthy information, actually. So, anyway, I encourage anybody to attend, and it'll be very useful. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
Boy, on the spot. The Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival is coming up in August, and at this time, representatives from the Carnation Festival are speaking to businesses about taking part in a large business card sort of a promotion where they will be placed on a fence since Excel is not, is not allowing us to put the banners on poles that we did before. And so, the business, excuse me, the Carnation Festival Committee is, is selling these, and it's just absolutely a bargain. It's $99 to be up there with all the, all, everybody in Wheat Ridge to be on this long fence, as well as some cards in your windows. And there's been some great response from the businesses, and I really appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Sang?
Nothing.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Nothing.
Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. A couple of things. Weeds, as I drive around, boy, I tell you, there's a lot of weeds growing up, and we've got to watch that because that can make a community look real trashy real fast. And if you don't like me telling you, wait till code enforcement comes out because they'll be out there in the next week or two, trust me. This would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, talk to one of us or staff. Please try to do a positive thing for your community, your family, which goes back to my first point, weeds. Help somebody. If your neighbors can't get out there and cut them, help them. You know, it won't hurt you. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Demott?
I would like to thank, on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Business District, my fellow council members for helping to continue our program, and I just want to assure, although there wasn't another amendment to come forward again for reports, I'm sure that we can definitely arrange something that we can come in and talk during a study session, definitely, to answer any questions that you might have. We, we do, Dick Matthews is our treasurer, as with so many other things, and he supplies us monthly with financial statements, and I'm sure he would have no problem preparing something, you know, even more detailed if, if we need it. He's, he's got all the details all the time, but he would be able to answer a lot better questions for anyone if they have them, and I will be happy to present that to the board and, and come back to a study session and see if we can answer some questions. And thank also the amendment for the additional 10% with respect to Councilmember Jay. I believe that at the business district, that was her idea, and I think it was a great idea to add, to add 10% to really, you know, extend those to Wheat Ridge businesses. We're helping one business as the applicant, but to help other businesses in the chain, it really helped out, and everybody was real excited about it. So, thank you, everybody, for your understanding on that one, and that is all. Thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Adams?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Barry? Thank you. I just wanted to thank council for the motions tonight. It was a little bit more difficult than normal because we had amendments to amendments, but generally speaking, it is confusing, but if a motion fails, the prevailing side is the group that voted no. If a motion passes, the prevailing side is the group that voted yes, and that's kind of what happened tonight. I thought Ms. Jay had made, when she made her 10% amendment, again, I thought she was on the prevailing side originally, so it got a little confusing there. But what we had, basically, just so the citizens understand, and also the business district folks, we had a main motion that was approved with Mr. Reinhardt's amendments, and a lot of those amendments codified what we already do as a business district. The amount was increased from 40 to 55,000, and then the caps were increased by 10% if the applicant is using local businesses. And we have all the information that the city manager will need, the treasurer reports and his bylaws and statements, so we can get that to him ASAP, so. I also wanted to thank, congratulate all the high school graduates at Wheat Ridge High School that are still graduating and having parties, but we had a good class. Nobody expected 2011, that group, to be as strong as they were academically and sports-wise. They did some great things as a really middle-of-the-road group, so congratulations to Wheat Ridge High School graduates. And this summer, I will be working at, if you're looking for me, this summer, I'll be working at the Family Crisis Center downtown, or actually, 10th and Federal. I'm wrapping up my licensure for special education, and my last bit of work is at Family Crisis Center at Denver Human Services on 10th and Federal as a student teacher with about 30 kids who actually live at the facility, and they have three classes, their elementary, middle school, and high school. So, it's been an eye-opening experience, and it's been rewarding. In fact, we're having a tour tomorrow on the Green Belt, and then we're heading over to Village Inn for an economics class with older kids. So, we're trying to still promote Wheat Ridge when we can. So, with that, congratulations, and we're done.